All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to, are you ready, Ciara? Okay, all right. I'd like to welcome to the Fruita City Council. It is now seven oh one P M. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Council Bremen.
Here.
Council Perser.
Here.
Council Williams.
Here.
Council Cry.
Here.
Council Miller.
Here.
Council Hansi.
Here.
All right, we're gonna move into, we've got a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. If you please stand with us. Uh, we'd like to take a moment of silence, allow all faiths and beliefs the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there was a change uh to the agenda from the original one that went out on Friday. Um, there was a resolution twenty dash twenty-two dash forty-one under council reports and actions that was added. But you were all emailed and made aware of that.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
I moved.
Second. Oh. Council Bremen.
Yes.
Council Perser.
Yes.
Council Williams. Council Cry.
Hi.
Council Miller.
I was not here.
Oh.
Not present.
Over to approve the agenda.
Just to prove that, okay.
This is the agenda.
Oh, this is for the agenda. I apologize. They're reading minutes. Approve.
Council Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we don't have any proclamations or presentations tonight, so we're gonna move into our public participation. Uh, so this is time set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. And generally, the city council will not take any action on these items. So we're gonna open this up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something uh that's not on our agenda, now would be your opportunity. All right, I'm seeing none. Ciara, is there anybody online that is?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're gonna close public participation and move into our consent agenda. Uh, so these are all items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before uh council for final action. They will all be approved by a single motion of the council. So we're gonna open that up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on something on the consent agenda, now would be your opportunity. All right, I'm not hearing anybody here. Is there anybody online that would like to?
No comments online.
All right, with that, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back to council. Are there any questions or do we have a motion?
I move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I just may make a comment. Uh, thank you, Mike, for getting back to me on the oil and gas number in the review. So I was not aware of that, so thanks.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Is there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Council Perser.
Yes.
Council Williams.
Yes.
Council Cry.
Yes.
Council Miller.
Yes.
Council Hansi.
Yes.
Council Bremen.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so we're gonna move into our administrative agenda. And so our first one is we've got a presentation uh for the Love of Fruita campaign overview, and we've got our communications and engagement specialist, Ciara DePinto, here to present on this item.
All right, so good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Uh, tonight, I would like to share with you an idea I have uh for a campaign focused around building community connections and increasing awareness around our city community, community engagement efforts. Um, this is a presentation I'm going to be sharing with a lot of our boards and commissions at the other January uh meetings to share the idea with them and see if they would like to participate as part of a a co-creator, which I will explain more in just a little bit. All right, so this idea for the campaign really came from the book Love Where You Live. I think some of you might have read it before. Mike, a while ago, did a book club on this with the community. And so the author of the book really describes why people in the community are the reasons why people love a place and the connections they have with the individuals. Um, he explains a couple of examples of different communities that have built that love for a place and how to, you know, how how a city can really be a part of building those connections and just how, you know, it doesn't take a lot to make big changes in a community. And so how does this relate to the city of Fruita? So the goal for the campaign is to, like I said, bring the community closer together through small acts. And then also, at the same time, bringing awareness to ways people can get involved the city of Fruita happenings by creating natural conversations with community members. So I really see this campaign as more of a long-term idea, uh, more informal and, yeah, not your traditional like marketing or communication camp campaign where you really push it online and through our different channels. It'll be more organic, you know, in a sense. So the how, so creating the campaign, um, the idea is gonna be called For the Love of Fruita. And thank you, Mike and Shannon, for the idea for the name. Um, it's perfect. And then also to kind of get the campaign going, um, utilizing different concepts from the book to again, push it in a more organic way. And I'll talk about two of those concepts in a minute. And then I also wanna create a landing page, which will be kind of the hub for all of our city engagement opportunities, and it'll just be a one-pager. Um, I really wanted to stand out from what we have on fruta.org and have it really be designed well and something that not a lot of people. I want people to land on the page and think, oh, my gosh, this is really cool. This is actually, this is from the city, like how cool that they're putting this together and um, can really get behind all of our engagement opportunities. And that will get kind of promoted naturally through these concepts from the book. All right, so one of the concepts, like I mentioned, is something called co-creators, and that is just kind of basically an ambassador for the city. And so who they are, they're individuals already involved or excited about the city. They're knowledgeable about city of Fruita happenings, and they're connected within the community. So naturally, um, boards and commission members are already co-creators, and that's where I wanna get started. So the co-creator part of this campaign will be kind of a program, but more of an informal, there won't be any process to become a co-creator as long as someone wants to participate and is um, you know, connected within the community and is excited and wants to participate in what the city is working on can be a co-creator. And so I wanna start with boards and commissions, but the overall goal is to get people involved that aren't necessarily on a board or commission, so we can um, reach a broader audience within the community. And so why co-creators are important is because I'm sure you're aware, but like information is more impactful when it comes from, you know, family or friends. And I think a lot of people in the community here in Fruita um have those connections and um, you know, our digital communication channels are really important, but I think people like that in-person interactions a lot, too. And so trying to build that connection more and building trust, um, building trust between the city and community members will be a goal of the co-creators. And so, yeah, I'd like to have like a list of co-creators that I can continuously communicate with, um, check in with them. You know, if there's, if they're hearing rumors in the community, they can let me know about that, and we can address them through our different communication channels. So again, more of a long-term relationship there. So the second part of this is um, kind of hitting on that first goal more of, you know, small acts of kindness and building those connections in unique ways is creating uh love letters. So this is a unique idea to uh start that conversation and also start promoting that landing page that I was talking about previously. And so the the idea behind this is for people to write a love letter of why they love Fruita, be like, dear Fruita, I love your sunsets and your coffee shops. It can be super simple. And then you leave it somewhere for someone else to find and continue the trend. And so, um, yeah, just a unique way to kind of get people excited about um, why they should love where they live. So here's one example from a different community and they, and again, so simple. I had no clue you'd be this cool when I moved here. Thanks for six awesome years and counting. And so, um, I'd like to utilize co-creators to get this started, and the hope is to have co-creators kind of push it and then have the trend keep going more naturally. Hopefully, the community would wanna participate long-term. Um, and then to help kind of tie in our community engagement efforts and cre- increase that awareness, I'm gonna create little letter templates, and at the, at the bottom, it'll have information about the campaign for the love of Fruita and probably like a QR code um to the landing page and really tie in why, you know, being involved and connected with what's going on in your community is one way to show your love for the place that you live in. Um, and so, yeah, that that's just one idea to kind of get the campaign going and um, yeah, increase awareness of our communication or our community engagement efforts. Um, I'm also thinking of ways to try to collect these letters. Uh, talking, I was talking with Nancy from the Arts and Culture Board, and um, she really loved the idea of maybe trying to collect them and utilize them in some kind of art piece, maybe a mural or something around Fruita. And so maybe, I don't know, having boxes around Fruita where people can um drop their letters in, or I was thinking of a hashtag for social media where people can share it and share it through social media with us, and we can just collect those digitally as well. Um, and yeah, maybe an art mural or a video or um, maybe just an event around all those love letters that we hopefully collect. And so like I said previously, that this presentation will be for boards and commissions. So at the end, I'll be asking them if they would like to participate as a co-creator. And so, um, it won't take a lot of their time. It's really is just to kind of start with those love letters and um, build trust with the community by, you know, have been a resource for myself to reach out to them with information and have that two-way communication with them. And um, yeah, I would like to, you know, have a list of co-creators and then having a communication channel. If that's a newsletter, I've also seen communities do like a Facebook group where people can talk with each other, um, just not, not just me directly, but with each other as well. And, yeah, so then just being a resource for future projects, like I said, maybe telling, having co-creators share why they love um, Fruita or, you know, again, I think the biggest part of the co-creator program would be to be having that two-way conversation and then also just connecting with community members that aren't necessarily necessarily following us through our our original communication channels. So that is kind of the overview of the campaign. Um, and again, yeah, I'm hoping to kind of start this off in January, and I see it as a long-term project for me. But, yeah, do you have any questions?
I love it.
Great idea.
Yeah, I love it. I think it's very Fruita.
Right. I'm glad you say that.
One thing I know, we did the book thing before, so are we gonna have additional books that, you know, if, I mean, is that gonna be part of that? Love Where You Live?
I wasn't thinking it would be a part of it, but I mean, that's something maybe we could do again if people are interested in doing. Um, I kind of see this campaign not pro- not pushing it too much through our regular channels. I probably wouldn't push it too much on social media. It's more of for the community to get involved and um, have it spread organically, I guess.
So I know you've already been doing a piece of this.
Um, yes.
Yeah. And and I'm curious what that success rate has been so far, or like, is this by getting the boards and commissions, the hope is to get it?
Yeah.
More well.
So I I see it differently. So Junes, we started so our radio show and podcast. At the end, we have a segment called For the Love of Fruita, where we share, um, yeah, just positive comments that we've received from the community. And the way I've promoted that in the past is by just having a form and doing it through our social media, asking people to submit comments. Um, and we've gotten a handful, so not a ton. And so that's why I'm hoping with this approach that it'll catch on and yeah, have more people get involved.
Awesome.
So.
I'm sure it comes as no surprise. I love this idea. So, yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
Also.
Double love there.
Also, in addition to boards and commission members, there's, there's numerous people that in the community that have engaged with the city over the years that are already co-creators by the definition of this book, and we'll be reaching out to quite a few of them as well. And then that'll help as you get more and more people involved, that'll continue to spread and um, but but I appreciate the way Ciara is going about it, because um, when you, when you read the book, and we'd be happy to get copies of the book for for any of you that have not had a chance to read it and get you some of those, so um, but uh, and and I've had the chance to to sit in some presentations by the author and meet the author and introduce the author at at a conference and uh, um, it's the, one of the biggest things is truly avoiding those traditional ways of, you know, here's an application process to be a cooker. I mean, all those things kill the uh, the actual um, results that you're going for. And so um, we're, we're excited for uh, to kind of continue rolling this out. And there's, there's, we're a community that's fortunately, even more than most, have a lot of people that are very engaged and and have a lot of love for this community and pride for the community. So it'll, um, we're pretty confident it'll take off.
Is it here towards mostly locals as being creators? Or, I mean, is part of the idea of also as we get tourists and visitors here, that they also drop notes as to why they love coming here?
Yeah, I think the love letter part of it could be for people visiting, but I see the, the co-creator part being more of just a fruit of community aspect to get that information to a broader audience than just our digital communication channels.
I I appreciate it. I think this is, this can be a great um, effort for our community to to grow uh even closer to each other. Um, just an idea for getting more co-creators, prior commission, uh, board and commissioners. Then like our former mayor Lori Buck, I would assume she would love to participate in something like this.
Okay.
Former, like, she's part of a pool that could um, also help get that pool to be bigger. Um, I don't know if we wanna grab uh, books and put them out like the like the library here in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we did the book club.
Just to get it out there that people can borrow it and and read it.
Yeah, we'll have to double check. When we did the book club, they did get additional copies, quite a few. I, it was quite a few at the library, but I don't know if they maintain that level, so we could. But I think it's pretty easy for them to request additional, and then lithic book, um, they, they got quite a few um, copies at the time, and so we can we can definitely check with both of those. It was pretty simple last time, so. That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ciara. All right, with that, we're gonna move into our city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I do have a few updates tonight. Um, one is we are coordinating with Mesa County for prior to giving them our official ninety-day notice uh for the contract for building services. Now that we know that we have two of the three um, already hired that have extensive experience and all the credentials that are needed to get started, we're making note, we're providing notice to uh the state of Colorado. There's a few steps we have to do that way. And then we're working with the staff and Dan had conversations today. I had a conversation with the county manager um to look into that transition. Although there's a ninety-day period per the contract, we wanna be uh helpful in a way that we are taking on projects even sooner if if able, so that uh, some of these projects can last a year, eighteen months during a construction period, larger projects like that. Um, we don't see it being too fair for them to start a project when we are, you know, ramping up to do it and then have to continue that for eighteen months. So if we can take those on uh, sooner than the ninety days, we're, we're trying to work that out, as well as maybe simple um inspections that come during that period that we could go ahead and start doing once we have that official um certification through the or or approval through the state, which is a pretty simple process when you have the two uh hires that we have that already have all the, all the uh certifications and a combined sixty-plus years of experience, so.
Mike, can I ask a question? So how does that affect, like, if one of those retires or whatever, we just have to get somebody with those credentials hired back into those positions? It doesn't affect our state approval?
No, yeah, we, we would be able to continue just making sure that we're hiring people that. And we have one more hire to do where would, it would be uh one of the other inspectors, and our hope is that, you know, we're continually cultivating people growing in those certifications that even if if all three, all three of our first team, maybe two, only two potentially might have all the certifications, but that doesn't mean we won't be working with those who have the other certifications to continue to reach all of those, which is something we do throughout the organization. Um, we are going to provide an update at the uh January third meeting, so we'll, we'll have a a brief update on where we're at with the building department and kind of the plans in into that first quarter uh, at the January third city council meeting. In addition to the January third meeting, we will have the police chief give an update on public safety and kind of go over how twenty twenty-two looks or or looks with or looked with uh the data from the year and then some of the plans and priorities that we're working on uh moving into twenty twenty-three and how we've done with some of the transitions from state laws that have been new over the last few years. And so we'll have that update at the January third meeting as well. I did wanna ask if um, as you are aware, we have um, assuming during council reports and actions, uh, you know, tonight is the night for the amendment to the creation of the housing authority. If we had, uh, I talked about potentially doing the housing authority meeting on the third. However, I remember during your discussions that it would be preferred to have that first housing authority meeting when all council members are are present. And I know we have at least one out on the third, and so I wanted to see if, and then there's no timing issue for us. So we, we were wanting to see if if we're gonna have full attendance on the seventeenth. And if we are, if that would be okay to go ahead and just plan that. Um, now that is something we can discuss when you're in your item later, but I just wanted to get that on the radar, so maybe check here. Yeah, or if you, if you know your schedules, that would be good, but rather than having it when we don't have a a full membership for the first meeting.
I'm good for.
Yep.
Okay.
Sure.
Sure. All right, on the seventeenth, just, just so you're aware, as we, as we look forward into the the month of January, uh, we will have an update from the Grand Junction Economic Partnership from the executive director Curtis Engelhardt. That night, we will also have an update from Ute Water. So those were a couple of updates that that we had talked about recently, so they are scheduled for January seventeenth. And then at the January workshop, we have a few items that we may uh be able to add to this workshop, but but currently uh, we know we'll talk about the the parks fee rollout. So that's one thing we're coming back to, and we'll, we'll have some proposals for rolling that out and a discussion for that. And then we are, we'll be checking to see if we can get someone from Chaffa. We might, I, I'm not sure if that date will work, but we are working on on those and a few other items that we've talked about, but just so you're aware, kind of what's coming up. And then uh, another update, we wanted to give a little more detail on the the Mulberry Plaza process. We did, we did receive two bids. One bid was late, um, and it turned out to be much higher than the the bid that was on time, so it wouldn't have mattered in the, in the scheme of things, but we did have those two. We awarded to Professional Pipeline and Concrete Inc. Uh, we spent last week reviewing the bid. The bid was for three hundred and forty-nine thousand nine twenty-five with a hundred thousand dollar force account. And what a force account is is when we requested bids, we said we'd like you to include a hundred thousand dollars in addition to the construction of all the hardscape amenities for contingencies, but mainly for the soft amenities. So things that we uh, had talked about not doing through the contractor, but or potentially where the things like seating and what the, the uh fire pits and uh, some of those types of amenities. At one point, it was gonna be some of the artwork, but now the Arts and Culture Board's gonna take care of the artwork, the seating and some of those pieces. Um, so we wanted to have some, some funding there because we knew we would be making some purchases of the things that aren't being constructed. Um, we did notice as we were combing through that, and often what we do when we, when we go through the bids and we make, when we, when we pick a bid is that we go through and make sure, you know, what's, what are the line items, and are there any things we have questions with or any things that we don't feel comfortable need to be corrected, something that's in there that isn't needed, or something that isn't in there that is needed. One of those was um, the, the shade cells was, is an additional forty-four thousand six hundred and ten. So as we, and that was one that we were gonna directly order, but then the contractor will install if that, so, so we considered that. A couple that we pulled out were, there were two movable planters, and they were just over twenty thousand apiece, and and we were like, no way, we're not gonna order those spec planters. We actually, they were on a list, and we were planning on trying to do those ourselves, not ourselves, but looking locally, you know, often with projects like this with bike racks and like in downtown, all the trash reciprocals, the, the recycle bins, the bike racks, all those things we've done locally, benches, things like that. We tend to save, save money doing that. We get artistic, you know, more Fruita-esque, you know, products that are out there and typically last longer. So we pulled those out. And then we pulled out the cost of the line items for, which wasn't a significant amount of cost, but to remove the current pieces that are in there so that they could get started, because we, we can do that. Um, and we, so we've already done that. If you've know, if you've seen that as um, to pull all that out so that they could start construction, so that saved us some costs as well. And uh, trying to see if we missed, there was anything else. The construction includes the or the, the cost then all comes under that force account, account then is, is to seventy thousand, and that, that comes, that comes under the four fifty, and that's why we, we proceeded. And the, the construction, that means all the things that are in that consent or that design, so the shade cells, the trees, the other planters that are in the ground and the foliage that comes out, the gas lines, the drainage lines, the, the, the ground, where the road base is now will be brick. And uh, so all the construction pieces included in that. And then it gives us the, the ability, we're gonna reuse some of the seating, and then we may purchase some additional seating, but we still have that seventy thousand towards those soft amenities within that entire budget. Um, we don't anticipate uh many changes or change orders. We've uh, we, we we've definitely emphasized that that is not something that uh, we want to see in any way. Um, but typically where we see those is when you're going much deeper into the ground, where you're going below eight inches, and you're you're really getting down in there and and you run, you can run into some things that might be unforeseen, even if you have the best plans that. Um, but this is all pretty surface level, so we're, we're pretty hopeful that we'll, we'll be good to go there. So we put out uh, to the public, and I know to you all in the update that we anticipated the construction to start on the twenty-sixth. It's looking like there might be very minimal work during that week, and then it'll probably get going much heavier in after the, after New Year's Day. The only other update I had was uh, the just with the iPads, those of you who have not received the new iPad, if you want to, you get two choices. If you wanna do the conversion yourself, we can just give it to you tonight, but what we've been doing is if, if you wanna leave your old iPad and your code, Shannon can back it up and then give it back to you, so everything's the same. And have that ready to go. If you wanna leave those tonight, we can have it ready um, tomorrow sometime and let you know and drop it off or have you pick it up. So just wanted to remind you that.
Day, what do we have? Three left?
All right, he's, he's asking for Thursday, but you know, the we, we like to exceed expectations. Definitely.
Exciting.
We'll have them by Friday.
Wednesday morning by eleven thirty.
No, thank you. That's, that's all I've got.
Hey, Mike, I've got to follow up with.
Yeah.
What, um? So you're saying when you talk about these different things that you pulled out, you're saying the fif- the forty for the sales came out of the hundred force, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then you said like those other little things came out of the three thirty-ish, whatever that.
No, the, so we, when we took down the uh, or when we removed the, the line items for removing our Or when we removed the, the line items for removing ourselves, the, everything. And the biggest cost was that we removed there were the two planters, movable planters that were over forty thousand. Um, so with those and the sales are, sales are part of that contract when we first went into it. But then we did, we did pull the sales out of the contract because we're just going to order them direct instead of order them through the contractor. And then the installation is still part of that. So the, the total, um, when all that said and done is what you're seeing of the, the four forty-nine. You know, including seventy thousand dollars that's still in the force account towards those, those other amenities. Yeah, none of the big amenities or anything like that. Yeah.
The other bid come in at?
It was, I want to say. Right around six hundred.
Was the, what's the, what are the big ticket items that are, are different when you're comparing the two contracts?
I don't know if, did you, did you go through that by chance? Because I, I did not. So we can't accept that bid. So they were, they came late. It was over. When you do bid openings, there's a specific time you have to be there. There's pre. And they came late and engineering was like, sorry, the bid openings already occurred and, and they were like, oh no. And. So Chris just said, what was the price anyway? You know, and he said, he said it was six hundred. I don't, I don't remember the exact, and he said, well, it, it, it wouldn't have been the low bid. So.
You didn't, you didn't get any detail from their bid?
Chris might have that.
I think it'd be great to, to just. Get confirmation because I hate, like, I know we had a prime conversations like. I'd hate for this to all of a sudden we're like, oh, shoot. We're a hundred short to get the project done, have the contractor come back and.
Yeah.
I know that we. Talked about different intricacies of the contract, but I guess that's my biggest concern where we do have a, a pretty solid budget. You see the secondary contract and I wish we could see the detail of it just to.
Yeah, but this happens, this happens every time we bid.
See, but I want to say this because that's the, that's, that contract means nothing because. Every time we get bids on stuff, we have specific dates to get stuff in and it doesn't hit it. I guess I don't understand why we even want to look at that. Because I mean, they, all these contractors know they do bids all the time, but the dates.
The, the value of looking at that other bid and comparing it is. Do we, to give us assurance and on that this bid that we've accepted, that everything's all right.
The bases are being covered.
Well, yeah.
That's, I don't think it is.
Keep in mind, just.
I'm not saying that it's, uh, I'm not saying us to do it. I'm just saying like, it'd be nice to hear, hear the results of the analysis.
I know, but my opinion is I wa, I don't want to waste staff's time going over anal, analyzing something that isn't even a. It's not an accurate bid. They missed the date. They missed that.
Well, no, 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 there, there's, oh, there's. I think the value in looking at it, especially to make sure that, like. My cons, my concern or a concern that you can have when you have construction projects is, well, great. Did this three, three fifty bid or whatever the, the bid that we took? If. If they're missing key components or if there's a risk that they could come back and be like, um, we screwed up the bid. So and it's that real quick, that like, we need another fifty grand. Yeah, that's, I, I'm just exploring this and looking at it because there's value to make sure that, like. Yes, we have a contract, but then there's a reality too.
Well, I, I'll give you an example because this will, this will maybe clear up a little bit. When we, we were doing the sewer project to go out to Iron Wheel. The contractor that was doing a bid on it, and that was the only time, and I think Mike probably verified this, is the only time councils ever had something that the contractor said, oh, I can't fulfill what I was doing. And so we had to actually award it to somebody else in the middle of it and it ended up costing us more.
Oh, yeah.
But it was something we had to make that decision. After a verified contractor that we've used in the past said, yep, we can do it. And then all of a sudden.
Their obligation.
Then failed their obligations. So it, on any project we do, that can happen. Yeah.
Yeah. So if I could just address, keep in mind, when we receive these, these bids aren't only, we don't make a decision on the cost alone. So. We paid, you know, upwards of fifty thousand dollars to design every step of what needs to be done. So when we get those bids, the reason why we're not putting out in an instant, um, every time you see in a weekly update, every project we do that we had a bid closing. You don't see the finals yet because it takes us a week or more to go through and make sure that every piece is in there. And sometimes we work with. The low qualified bidder and then we make sure that every piece is in there. So, so we did that. So everything. That's in the design and all the steps that have to be occurred have been approved with our engineering department before we enter into that contract. So.
And things like that, that gives, that gives me assurance that like, hey, we're, we're not going to get blindsided.
We do the same process with this as building a wastewater reclamation facility or any street or a bridge or anything like that. Same department, same review. Same assurance before we end, go into that contract.
Which doesn't mean something can't go wrong. It just means that we've done our due diligence as staff to follow up and make sure we've checked every box that we can.
And I, and I appreciate what, what you're saying with, with how they do review it. But when you look at just the surface of. We got a bit, I know it's a late bid and we didn't accept it, but when you get a bid that's three fifty and you get one that's six, it's like, that makes you scratch your head. Is everything all hunky dory and it's good to go because I just hate to be blindsided with something which throws the contract. Like the, the sewer thing, you hate to get hosed like that, but I'm just, I appreciate you explaining your process and, and the value of having. The study done so that you have that benchmark to start from. And it's not like you get a fresh bid and you're like, oh, I think we've got everything.
Yeah.
But you've, you've got your. Tie back to.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question.
I did want to ask, I'm just wonder if it's possible. I don't know what it would cost and there might already be a sign because I did see some sign hanging on the back, but I didn't um see. They could be great to have a big-ish picture of the concept drawing displayed in the air and maybe you're already working on that, but I think. You know.
Yeah, we wish it was out already, but we're working on.
Okay.
But it is something we've got.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Question for Mike on this one. Before he finishes up his report, right?
No, that's it. I don't have any anymore.
All right. With that, then we're going to move into our council reports and actions. Our first item is resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-one, um, a resolution. Authorizing the creation of the Fruita Housing Authority. And so um, have you got Dan Kears? Are you presenting anything on this or? His Mary Elizabeth doing?
Yeah, we do have Mary Elizabeth online, so. There we go. Mary Elizabeth, can you hear us well and?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, hear you and we can see you. So you're good to go.
All right. Uh, so uh, you have the resolution in your packet in front of you and Dan, I don't know if you want to share that on the screen. Um. If you guys recall, and some of you were on council at the time and some of you weren't, but council did um form per statute. This is a statutory process to form a housing authority. Uh, earlier this year and at that time, uh, council formed that authority. With the board of the authority being just nine um people who would be appointed by. Uh, council and the mayor pursuant to the charter. Uh, since that time, you know, the housing authority has never met. Nobody's ever been appointed to the board. So it hasn't, it's been formed only in name, but hasn't, you know. Been active and hasn't had a board to be active. Uh, since that time, you guys have had uh lots of discussions. About the role of the housing authority and, you know, came to the conclusion you wanted to staff, staff to go back and. Um, rather than having a board appointed that could be, you know, just. Uh, members from the public to have the city council, which this is an option under the statute. So you have, there, there are two options. I guess I should back up when you form a housing authority. To either just have the city council sit ad hoc as the board of the housing authority or have this process for appointing members. Uh, so what we've done at council's request is um, put a resolution before you that basically. Kind of rescinds that prior formation and instead forms the housing authority with the council sitting as the board. And that's what's in front of you tonight. And as Mike mentioned earlier, then um, when you guys can all be together at, I believe the second meeting in January. Um, you will then. Uh, call a meeting to order of the housing authority, sit with that hat on and at that point, um, would adopt bylaws and conduct any other business that may be in front of the housing authority at that time.
All right, Mary, that's, that's all you've got, right?
That's all I got.
All right. Now that's quick and to the point, I like that. Um. Um, with that, and I'm going to ask this question because normally I think when we're doing a lot of resolutions, don't we open that up to public comment? Or do we not? I thought we normally do. If there's anybody that wants to leave feedback.
Sure.
So I was just going to do that now, just because I, I think usually when we're doing some resolutions, that's on our legislative hearing. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. If there's anybody that'd like to speak on this item. All right, I'm not hearing any, did you, there's nobody online? There's nobody else online? All right, that makes it easy. All right, we're going to close that and then bring you back to council. Are there questions on this item? Is there anything we want to? Change in this? I, I mean, I didn't see anything, but I'm one pair of eyes. So. I think Matthew saw everything now with his bigger iPad. Right?
So what we're doing is we're off, the resolution is for mending. The current. Creation, the housing authority and the only verbiage in here. Confuses by what that changes. So we don't actually have the bylaw or the laws in here which say that is the city council, correct? Or am I missing this?
Well, so this, so the, this resolution sets the city council as the board.
Sorry, I was misreading the order of it. Never mind.
Okay, okay.
That statement. To use legal terminology.
Your wife would be proud.
No, she wouldn't because I screwed it up.
So I think, I think Dan might be scrolling down on that on, online, but that's um. See, if you'll see the amendment. It of amending that earlier resolution forming the authority. This will now establish the city council as the board. And then um, you guys will meet as the housing authority. In January and at that point we'll discuss and adopt bylaws.
I'm caught up. Never mind.
Does anybody else have any questions? Or comments? I mean.
No.
No. Do we have a motion then?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fruta amending resolution number. Twenty twenty-two dash O two concerning appointment of commissioners to the housing authority board.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second. Are there any additional questions or comments on this item? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Mission pass is six zero.
All right. With that, our next item is an executive session, but before I do that, I want to do council reports. Um. Has anything with the report on? Aaron, did you want to start?
I have nothing to report.
All right, Amy.
Only thing I have to report is I, one of my clients today called me um, and I went over, I sold them a house in Fruta. Four months ago, they moved here from Texas and they had me over for tea and some cookies and just to tell me how much they have fallen in love with Fruta. They absolutely love it and they're telling everyone they know. Which I, yeah, I, I almost, almost told you that when, when you were doing your thing because they will definitely be writing a love letter, but. I just, it was fun to have like a, a really positive interaction. So keep up the good work. That's all I have.
Nothing for me.
All right.
Um, since the last time that I was here, we had the lighting of the town um, that the downtown advisory board and chamber partnered up um to put on and it was just a wild success. It was really fantastic and super fun. There was slight confusion. Asked a couple of the council members about where, uh, where the. Actual whatever, where Santa Claus was going to be only, I guess, was the only confusion, but um, yes. Um, but yeah, it, it was just really good and I uh, we're all looking forward to doing it again and we have a few comments of um. Things we want to improve on, but it was just really, it was great and lots of people showed up and it was a good time. Yes, I did. We had an interview tonight um for a spot um on the livability commission who is uh also here right now watching us and. I'm learning more about the city all the time and yeah, we're going to go ahead and approve her at our next meeting. So that was great. And we also have another interview later on for the downtown advisory board. So not tonight, but coming.
Next year.
Next year, yes.
Great, Matthew.
A couple of things uh for the, for the chamber, we spent a, a lot of time looking at the budgets. Uh, of the chamber, um, the discussion that happened within uh the council workshop was uh a fair amount of discussion. Uh, with the chamber board and that is going to continue. Uh, those conversations, uh, I don't know where they're going to end, but it has definitely spurred a lot of conversations on that board. Um, parade of lights, hopefully everybody got to see it. I just want to point out that some of us were out there in the cold while others were in a nice warm.
Just got to find the right ride.
Limo, uh, some of us are sitting.
Trolley car.
Got to tell me about later.
Right.
Which some of us were sitting on nice cold uh metal chairs.
Probably talk to the chamber about that one.
It's not in the budget.
What, you don't get a crown or a, a royal seat?
No, not even close. Uh, GJ upper meeting tomorrow, so I have an updated the next meeting. Uh, based on, I think it was our last meeting, I did talk to um. Zeb, uh, Zebulon Miracle over at United Way about coming in and maybe with somebody from two on, two on one as well. To when we get a chance to schedule it to talk about what services are out there. So as council, we can be aware of kind of how the county does a needs assessment. I think it's every three, so three years or five years, do you know? I thought it was three. Yeah, every three years and kind of what that process looks like and then how the nonprofits get together and kind of try to divvy up who does what. And then the overview of two-on-one in terms of how citizens can go out uh or utilize two-on-one to find services that are needed. We kind of talked about that. Um, do we want to do that presentation at a workshop versus a council? So uh, Zeb is, was thrilled to kind of head that up as well. Uh, to come in. If we do it at a workshop, do we also want to invite the, you know, fire department, the police department as well? Because they may have some input and conversations and they may not be aware of all the services that are out there. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there. And then when would we like to schedule?
What, how long's the presentation would we do?
How long?
We do ten to, well, five to fifteen minutes.
I think with two-on-one and that, that's probably going to be closer to about twenty-five minutes.
Well, he's telling.
Personally would like to do it as a.
But that doesn't mean they stick to.
I would personally like to do as a workshop because I think would be better to have the interaction and questions.
I agree.
Yeah, and then it would be interesting to. After we have, or while we're having that discussion, like, do we have like a community?
Yeah, what?
A community um opportunity to have them hear about two-on-one and all that as well. Or if we do FAQs or whatever, things like that.
Right.
Like get it away from us to. Get us the information that we can pass it into the.
I agree.
Yeah. But I, I like the idea of starting in the workshop.
Okay.
And see where it goes.
I know January, we're going to be pretty. I don't know. Yeah, I, I think February, March, what is our schedule right now?
Yeah, I. You know, honestly, if you, at this point in time, if you wanted to add it to January, it would work. We would just not. Pursue some of the other things that we could still do in February, which would be fine. The, the post fee, we don't see as being a long discussion. It's uh honestly being pretty short. So. We could do that and, and just, and then have this if he's available. I would, I would say sooner than later because. We're going to be working on quite a few things that, especially as we get into that February, March, March, April, especially.
I mean, the question would be if you want to have Chief Kraus here. I don't know if you have any, oh, I'm getting him here.
Oh, yeah, he'll be here.
Get with Frank Cavalier.
I'll talk to both.
If he could come, that way we hit some of that. Is there anybody else that you guys feel would be important input? But in the staff, I don't know if you guys know of anybody else that you might think would be good.
Yeah, well, we'll go, we'll, we'll look at that and invite everybody we can, you know, we'll probably have a decent amount of leadership team there, just. Um, and then some staff, but if you want to see if he'd be available for the January.
With him, that's January twenty-fourth.
I would say if, if he isn't the January or February, we can make either work, so.
So what's the best process? I can talk to him and find out about the twenty fourth and if he's available.
Is it Tuesday?
Two, is it the twenty four? All right.
Off on my day.
It is the twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth, yeah.
So if he is available, should I connect him to, do you know Zeb?
I, I, I'm pretty sure I've met him. Yes.
Well, he used to, he used to work at the Dinosaur Journey.
Yeah, it's one of the best names of anybody I've ever known.
That miracle?
Zebulon Miracle.
Yeah.
Name like that. So I'll check with Zeb, see if he's available. If he is, then I'll connect the two of you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I've got, sir.
That's all? You sure? You filled in for everybody else. So that's good news. I like that. Um, all right, with that, I don't have anything on my report to do. So with that, then we can.
Was that a compliment?
It was a compliment.
I took it as a compliment. Rest of us slack.
That's right. And you were overachieving as usual. So just making the rest of us look bad.
Let it go. He couldn't just leave it.
All right. All right. We better move into our executive session before I put my foot in my mouth a few more times. All right, so.